Hello everyone and welcome to the Speech Language Pathology Services in the Schools e-Forum. Sarah, we're very excited about today because we have had a phenomenal response.
Absolutely.
I believe there are over 400 people working in the schools who have registered for today's forum. So that is incredibly exciting.
Yep.
So without further ado, let us introduce ourselves. So I am Alex Carling and I am the Director of Professional Practice and Quality Assurance here at Castlepo.
I am Sarah Chapman-Jay and I am Advisor with Professional Practice and Quality Assurance.
And just in case you haven't come across us before, we are actually both Speech Language Pathologists.
Yes.
I work full-time here at the college, but Sarah, you are still working as an SLP.
I am indeed. So I'm here at the college three days a week, Mondays, Thursdays, Fridays, and then I work two days a week as a speech pathologist.
Terrific. So we are going to be referring to a lot of information today, a lot of resources, and you will be able to find them on our website, castlepo.com. And also, we will be posting the slides and this recording on the website. And you will find them if you go in and look for events and then click on e-forums. You will find them there. So look at our agenda.
I know. Okay, get ready.
We have a lot to get through. Now, the reason we have so much on the agenda is that Sarah and I did look at all of our practice advice calls and emails and we pulled out some of the most frequent issues that need addressing. But we also asked some people, we reached out and got a very good response. So this is why we have quite a lot to get through. Now, this is going to affect our ability to answer questions as we go through. But the good news is, what we did, and it seems to be working very well, is please write your questions in the question box. We do want them as you go through, as you're thinking of them. If we have time at the end, we will look at a few of them. However, we are going to keep all of them and we're going to write an FAQ that will be published in our next edition of Express. That's what we did for our previous e-Forum on consent and capacity. I think it's a good way of doing things. So please trust us that your questions will be answered.
And this is a great opportunity when you can bring, you know, maybe it makes you think of new questions and we love hearing from you to get these new questions.
Absolutely. So we are going to start off with consent.
Okay, so we have a lot of scenarios for you. So this is going to be as interactive as possible. We want you to poll your choices when we present you with some different scenarios. So this very first one, we're going to start with consent for screening.
Yeah.
So we're going to take a look at Olga. She's a school board SLP. And she screens all the senior kindergarten students for language and literacy issues. So what has happened up to date is she sent letters describing the SLP screening program, those who sent home with the students. Olga's information, way to contact her is included. So if parents have any questions, they can reach her. The letter also includes information about not participating in the screening and possible next steps. There will be a checkbox for parents to consent to the SLP screen. And the parents can sign on the bottom of the letter indicating that I have read and understood this form and send it back with their child.
So it's a, it's a, it's a good letter. It's got a lot of comprehensive information.
Yeah. So our very first polling question to you is, is sending the consent letter sufficient for informed consent? So the options are no. Alex is going to be opening up the polling options here. So the first one is no. Now, I'm just seeing actually, Alex, we've got yes, no, maybe. Is that right? So no, Olga must contact the parents by phone to obtain consent. The second one is yes, all the required information is in the letter. And the third one is no, Olga should first ensure that the parents can read and understand the letter.
So I'm now going to open up the poll and I'm launching it.
Lovely.
And you should be free now to vote.
Oh, her parade. It's working. We are seeing responses. This is very reassuring. Yes. We always like this very first polling situation to go well.
Yes.
All right. This is great.
So we're getting a lot of people voting. And yes, it's interesting. It's a rage. We are going to be showing you the results of this polling for each of the questions. So we'll just give you a couple more seconds. We're seeing we're nearly at 50, 60%. So I am actually going to close the poll now and share it. And hopefully you're seeing this. And we've got 14 saying no, Olga must contact the parents. 36, about a third of you, yes, all information is fine in the letter. And 50 saying Olga should ensure the parents can read. So I'm going to hide that and click on here and Sarah.
We are now going to see the answer, which says no. We are going to help explain this. Olga should first ensure that the parents can read and understand the letter. So let's just talk about this a bit more. Okay. So Olga can ask the classroom teacher if she or he is aware of any parents with English literacy difficulties. So obviously, if the parents can read English, absolutely send the consent letter home. If they can't read English, for whatever reason that might be, it would be good to ask the teacher to go over the consent letter with the parent or see if the best option, what options are the best. Maybe you, as the speech pathologist, can call the parent. Maybe we'll involve an interpreter depending on the language barrier that could be there. Again, if you happen to work in a certain area where you know there are key languages that are in the schools, then again, consider for that form to be translated into those frequently used languages as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so really considering all of the options there. So now moving on to another scenario, the SLP staff meeting. We have Lynne, who is an SLP in the same school board. And she's expressed concerns about a teacher getting consent for SLP services. Is this acceptable?
Is it possible for a teacher to get consent?
A teacher, a resource teacher?
Yeah.
Somebody else? So in this polling question, can a classroom teacher obtain consent for SLP services? We have three options. Number one, no, only a regulated health professional can obtain consent. Number two, yes, as long as the SLP is confident that the teacher adequately explains and obtains consent. Or number three, only a resource teacher has the knowledge and skills. So Alex is going to open up the polling for this question. We're going to hopefully see, yes, we're seeing some responses. This is so reassuring, isn't it? We love this part. Okay. And this is why we bring them up, because there is sometimes lack of clarity of which would be the best option here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So interestingly, I mean, yes, we're going to share the results with you, but I can tell you it's pretty 50/50 at the moment between only a regulated health professional and yes, a teacher can. So we'll give you just a few more moments. And I'm now going to close the poll and share the results with you. So you can see a bit of a split here between no, only a regulated health professional can, or yes, as long as the SLP is confident in the teacher. So I'm now going to hide the poll, come back to our presentation and Sarah.
Well, our answer is yes. Now, there are provisos with this, I'm going to say. So as long as you, as the speech pathologist, are confident that the teacher adequately explains and obtains consent. So we're going to, I think, zoom in on this a little bit more. So yes, SLPs are responsible for all aspects of care, including obtaining and documenting. I want to stress this point because as a peer assessor as well, we have certainly, this could be an area where sometimes we fall short a little bit. So we want to obtain and document consent to screen, assess, and treat. So in this situation, another professional, we're saying the teacher can obtain the consent for SLP services, but they must be educated about valid and informed consent.
And so actually, what we're saying is yes, a teacher can, but the SLP is still responsible for that consent. So it is the SLP's responsibility to really, to train the teacher in all of the elements that Sarah is going to talk about.
So what does this include? So valid consent, so the consent must be voluntary. It's not, it can't be forced in some way or obtained through misrepresentation. It has to relate to the services being proposed. So I think that's important because we're going to be talking about this as well. We need consent for all of it, for screening, for assessment, for treatment, and any other recommendations that might be happening, plan of care. And that is informed. So that, so we have these seven different things to keep in mind when you are explaining to the patient. So in this case, it's the teacher on your behalf. So as Alex said, you need to educate the teacher on how to best explain the nature of your services, the expected benefits of your services, the material risks of your services, any material side effects, any alternative courses of action, the likely consequences of not having the services, as well as the opportunity to respond to questions about any of these matters.
Absolutely.
We have added in here something that I really love. I often refer to.
Me too.
We have a consent tool and there is a link for this consent tool on our website. You will find it under Resources. And then when you go into Resources, you are going to find a number of boxes of choices. And for this one, you will go to Consent and Capacity.
And Sarah, what I really like about this tool is that it actually gives examples of text, of language that you can use for all the different elements of consent. And also, we're going to move on to P HIPAA in a moment, but it also covers P HIPAA. So it's consent to treat.
Absolutely. And suggestions. And so you can go in and find the school, I think it's school, SLP services.
Yes.
And there's these dropdowns that tell you the nature, the expected benefits, the risks, all of that.
So we really do recommend that you go and look at it. It is a great resource. Yes.
Okay. So still within the field of consent here for services. So Rashid, an SLP in the same board, has obtained and documented consent to screen Nathan. Now, the results have shown that Nathan does need a language assessment. So Rashid sent home an assessment consent form with Nathan, but actually didn't receive a response. And we hear from you as well. This is a frequent issue.
Yeah.
So, and to answer this, there is no contact phone number for Nathan's parents. It's out of service. So he's sort of hit a roadblock here. So he goes to his colleagues and says, well, can I proceed with the assessment as Nathan's mum has consented to the screen? So here we are, polling question for you. Can Rashid proceed with the assessment? Yes, the consent letter was for screening and assessment is the next logical step. Or yes, Nathan's screen results indicate that he needs an assessment and probably language therapy. Or the third option is no, the parents only consented to the screening.
Okay, so I'm going to open up this poll and launch it. Here we are.
All right. So we are ready for you, I believe, to make your choices from these three options.
And so far, we're getting a very consistent response of no, the parents only consented to the screening. Maybe I shouldn't say that, actually.
I was going to suggest, Alex, that maybe we just say, yes, there's some consistency here without letting them know.
Yes, absolutely.
What is reassuring is you seem to all be on the same lines with this one. So I think let's move on with this one.
Okay, so I'm going to close.
Next time, Alex might not reveal the answer ahead of time. We'll find out.
And we've got 99% saying that no, parents only consented to screening. So I'm going to hide that. And here we are, back onto here.
Fantastic. We have the right answer for everybody. Yes, in this instance, the parents only consented to the screening. Rashid does need to obtain informed consent, that all those areas we just talked about, the nature, the risks, the consequences, the alternatives. We need to get informed consent as it relates to assessment. Now, Alex, this is interesting. So in, again, the Act, the Healthcare Consent Act, it does talk about no treatment without consent. And I want to zoom in, when we say treatment, and we did bring this up, I think, maybe a couple, two, more than three years ago.
Yeah.
What do we propose is treatment. So for us, treatment includes all of them, screening, assessment, and treatment.
Yes, yes.
So the Healthcare Consent Act does say that if you're proposing a treatment, you shall not administer that treatment without consent.
And I think this is very difficult for all of us because here we are with the knowledge, skill, and judgment. We can really help students in the school to access the curriculum. But unless you have consent, you can't do it. So, you know, work with your colleagues in the school system, the teachers, maybe the principal, maybe the resource teacher, to really try and track down the parents so you can actually get consent. So I'm just going to click on the slide. Oh, over to you, Alex.
It's over to me.
So what we are going to focus on now is consent to collect, use, and disclose personal health information. So what frequently happens, and we've learned so much from this, haven't we, Sarah? From all of this research and reaching out to you. And we've been told that what frequently happens is that medical information about a student is sent to a school board by the parent. And let's say that the parent consented to sharing this medical information, a report or what have you. And the report contains information that may result in a student receiving SLP services. So what we mean by medical information is, and maybe an ENT report either about the voice mechanism or hearing, maybe an audiogram from an audiologist, an audiology, central auditory processing report, pediatrician report, or another SLP. So let's, for the sake of argument, say it is a central auditory processing report. Okay. So can the school's SLP review this medical information? So let's do another poll. Answer, yes, the information was sent to the school board and the SLP is employed by the school board. Or yes, the parents gave consent for the information to be disclosed to the board. Or no, the student needs to be referred to the SLP first. So I am launching the poll.
And we're letting them choose their answers without me saying anything. Any tips or hints from this end?
Yes, absolutely.
And this is a good question, really, because it is maybe not as clear to all of us.
So we've gotten quite a few votes in now. I'm absolutely desperate to see.
Give the answer.
Well, you to give all the percentages and things like that, but I can tell you, it's not 100%.
Right. No, not as clear cut, this answer. So that's okay. And that's what we need to know from you as well. This is part of the purpose of doing the forum.
For sure, for sure. So let us share the results with you. So we've got 63% saying no, the student needs to be referred first. And then a quarter, yes, and a few, yes, because they're employed. So let's hide that and move on. And the answer is yes, because the parents gave consent for the information to be disclosed to the board. If you've got consent, then the SLP can view that medical information, okay? Before they take on.
Before they initiate any SLP services.
Absolutely. So that, let's say it was a central auditory processing report. Maybe it's brought to an IEP. You know, first of all, the SLP would say, do I have consent, do I have consent to review this report? And if someone says yes, the parents did consent, then you can review the report. The key word is consent. The parents gave consent. Now, if the parents didn't give consent, no, you cannot review the report. You would have to wait and receive a referral first. Okay. So now, there's a lot of information here from the Information and Privacy Commission. And we're going to move on now to the circle of care. And actually, interestingly, that phrase, circle of care, isn't in P HIPAA. You're not going to find it in the Act, but you will find it in a lot of the information produced by the Information and Privacy Commission. And what it means is that you have assumed implied consent. But we have to point out that there must be an initial consent. And then after that, if you follow these six criteria, you can assume implied consent to share information. Now, there are six criteria and we have to say that all six must be met. So let's go through them. So first of all, that the HIC, Health Information Custodian, I hope you don't mind, but I'm going to say HIC. So the HIC, Health Information Custodian.
Which is you, a speech pathologist.
A speech pathologist is entitled to rely on an assumed implied consent. So you are a regulated healthcare practitioner. So yes, you and your audiology colleagues are entitled to rely on assumed implied consent. So the information, in this case, the CAP report, Central Auditory Processing Report, must be received by an individual, that's a patient, or the substitute decision maker, and in this case, it would be the parent, or another health information custodian, so a physician, an audiologist, what have you. Now, if that information was collected, used, and disclosed by a third party, such as an employer, an educational institute, or insurance company, then a consent cannot be assumed and implied. Now, the third point is a general point, that the personal health information is collected, used, and disclosed for the purposes of providing general healthcare for the individual. So what it means by this is that the information collected, it wasn't collected for research, fundraising, or marketing. Okay? So we have three down, three to go. So now, we're going to be a little bit more specific, that the Health Information Custodian must use that personal health information for the purposes of providing their healthcare to the individual. So in this case, it's speech-language pathology, or if any school board audiologists are joining us, audiology. Okay? And the disclosure of personal health information must be from one custodian to another custodian. Okay? Excellent. It really does mean that you need consent to disclose information outside of, outside organization. So when receiving this information, you must not be aware that the individual has expressly withheld or withdrawn consent. Okay? So it's really your responsibility to find out, you know, are they fine with this? That there's no problems with the disclosure of the information. Sometimes people refuse to consent, or as you were saying earlier, Sarah, just withdraw consent.
Yeah, which they can do anytime during the process. Or sometimes what they do is withhold certain pieces of information. Yeah, I know sometimes early on, say, a diagnosis might have been provided for the child, but the parents are not at that place yet. They may withhold that information initially. So they do have that right initially. Yeah, until they are ready to share that information.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent. So I think with that, we'll move on to our next section, which is continuity of care and concurrent intervention.
Thank you, Alex. Okay. So a new scenario here, the SLPs at the River Preschool Centre. So we're very aware, obviously, there's a lot of collaboration between preschools going into schools and the care of their caseload. Certainly children who need ongoing SLP services when the children start school. So the preschool SLPs obtain the parents' consent to refer the child to the school board for SLP services. They've also obtained consent to disclose relevant personal health information to the school board. And you know, everyone's got their own systems, but typically it might be through the form of a report. So what does this consent mean to the school board SLPs? Can the school SLP review the report and contact the preschool SLP to discuss the report? So while Alex opens up the polls, our options here are going to be yes, the parents consented to the use and disclosure of their child's information, no, the school SLP needs to get consent from the parents, or partial.
And with partial.
And so now I can see the part here, it says, the school SLP can review the report, but not contact the preschool SLP.
Excellent. So just a little explanation, I opened up too early and covered the slides. So now I'm opening up.
Hopefully you can all see the three options, even if I can't.
There we are.
Okay, poll is open. We're ready for any of your responses. So an interesting combination coming up here. Two more than the other are sort of the responses.
Yeah.
Two higher percentages for sure. And I'm assuming this is a very common occurrence, right? So this is again, very important question to ask.
Okay, so let us close the poll and share the results with you. And so we've got 50% just over saying, yes, the parents consented. 40 are thinking a little bit more cautiously, partial, the school board, SLP can review the report, but not contact the SLP. So.
Thank you, Alex. All right. So our answer is going to be actually yes. The parents, and this is, I think, we, I feel like we're repeating our message here. If the parents have consented, then it's okay.
Yes.
Okay, so the parents did consent to the use and disclosure of their child's information.
And also, Sarah, we are in the circle of care as well. Because the report, number one, we know that the SLP from the school preschool Because the report, number one, we know that the SLP from the school preschool got consent. And they are a health information custodian. You are a health information custodian. You're using this for healthcare, for speech, language pathology, you have the right to do it. So we are firmly.
So in this case, the school SLP has received the referral as well.
Yes.
Excellent, right. So again, reviewing the purposes of the P HIPAA Act. Certainly their rules, you're keeping the information confidential all time, respecting the privacy of the individual with respect to that information. And really, this is part of the act that facilitates effective provision of healthcare. So they don't want it so sealed that I know my information, you know it, but there's no way to share.
Yes.
And especially for the benefits of the student.
Yes.
Keeping them at the utmost.
Yes, and remembering, you know, I think it's very important, this last element that we've highlighted, facilitating effective provision of care. Because, you know, you do need good continuity of care. You do need to be able to contact the SLP who is in effect referring or sending you the information, different school boards use different language. But you do need at times to have a good conversation with them.
And also, I mean, you know, I always think of students, why would you put them under unnecessary reassessment if, if there's just been a very current one done? You have very valid results.
Yes.
You know, there's lots of situations where it makes sense, again, for the student, not to put them through anything unnecessary.
Absolutely.
That maybe you can go straight into some goals, plan of care for them. So also the principles, really, yeah, ensuring that continuity of care. And again, we just want, keep saying this, but if you are ever concerned that no consent was provided, or you can't see any documentation of consent, then you want to, you want to verify that.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that's the end of the consent portion, I believe.
The.
It might, we'll find out, concurrent intervention.
What, continuity of care, so you are on to concurrent.
Yes, concurrent intervention. Okay, so this situation is Dan. He has a diagnosis of autism and his parents receive funding for private SLP services in the home. He does the town Cherrywood School and his IEP does include SLP services through the school board. So Dan's parents, they have consented to disclose personal health information. So again, the parents have consented so that there's collaboration of the SLP services. This time, we're asking, is the school SLP required to follow the private SLP's plan of care for Dan, which involves intensive one-to-one intervention? Options here are no, the school SLP follows the board's model of SLP service while collaborating with the private SLP. Option two is yes, it is in the child's best interest to have both SLPs carrying out the same programme. Or yes, the parents have asked for the school SLP to follow the plan of care.
So let us launch the poll.
This is great, isn't it? Because there are sometimes very definitive answers and then other times questions.
Yeah.
You know, percentage wise. So this seems fairly definite in one area. I think probably we can move on with this one, do you think?
Yes.
Very definite response?
Yes, absolutely. So I'm now going to close the poll and share the results with you. And they are, 98% know the school SLP follows the school model of service while of course still collaborating.
Okay, so that's me. And this is the answer, no. So the school board will have their own model of SLP services, but as we say, also collaborating with the private SLP. So we're going to take you to really a position statement that talks to this concurrent intervention that definitely can work when it's in the student's best interest.
Absolutely.
So we pulled out some of the principles, but we certainly would like you to refer to this document yourselves. Again, it's under resources, you can find it under SLP Services in Resources. So the principles would be that the speech pathologist must make reasonable efforts to contact each other, providing care to the patient. And really, what we're encouraging is that collaboration. We want you to work with each other to provide a complementary approach to patient services. You want to provide clinical expertise in a collaborative manner. We want to interact according to the different roles and responsibilities. So the school board will have their own set of policies of what kind of services are available to provide, respecting personal and professional differences between the clinicians and also managing any misunderstandings, any limitations or conflicts that may arise. You are going to be considering the types of intervention in each situation. The private SLP may have more time available for that one-to-one intensive intervention. Really also looking at what kind of communication methods you will, you will establish between you to ensure again that the student's best needs are met as well. If it does ever arise that there are disagreements, we also have posted a link for the position statement on resolving disagreements between service providers.
And I have to say, Sarah, this is an area where we're now getting more calls in practice advice about concurrent intervention and concurrent intervention in school boards and school services. And, you know, we really do recommend good communication, good collaboration. And be aware, if anyone is joining us from the private sector and they do refer to the school board, be aware of the service model that the school board is able to provide. I think that that's good advice as well. So hopefully it doesn't end up too much in disagreements. Collaborate.
Yes, and obviously from CASPO's perspective, we're here to protect the public. So we're not wanting to limit services to the child or the family. So if the parents choose to seek out additional services that could be supportive for the child, then that, that makes sense as well.
Absolutely, okay. So we're going to change tack now and we are going to focus on supervision of support personnel. So not all school boards have support personnel, but a fair number of them do. So it is certainly an issue. So we employ CDAs in our board, but unfortunately I can't directly supervise as much as I would like due to distance and time constraints. And in the past, we've always thought of distance as being SLPs living in rural areas. But actually, some SLPs have told us that they could be working in a big metropolitan city and distance is still an issue for them, as it is.
Traffic or subway closures, possibilities.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So I think the question really applies to everyone. Can we use technology to supervise at a distance? So our polling question, can we use this technology? So first answer is no, supervision of CDAs must be at the same time and in the same place. Yes, but it must be in real time via a secure live platform. It cannot be a recorded session with a student. Or yes, again, via a secure live platform or video recordings as close to the therapy session as possible. So I'm going to open up our poll. Here you are. And I think maybe again, interesting, it seems to be not everyone.
Three choices of the options, yeah.
So I'll just give you some time to vote. I'm going to have a quick sip of water. Excellent, so we're nearly up to 50%. So, oh, we've jumped to 80%. So I'm going to share the results.
Okay.
So we are nearly 80% yes in real time or a recent recording and 20% yes in real time. So I'm going to hide that now and go back to our slides. And the answer is yes. The bottom one, a secure live platform or video recordings as close to the therapy session as possible. Now, we revised this, the use of support personnel for SLPs. We worked on it in 2016 and 17. And this is one of the changes, that we are allowing recordings as close to the therapy session as possible. We appreciate, number one, the incredible increase in technology, but we also appreciate that not all of you are going to have a secure live platform. So we've got to provide options for good supervision. So in the position statement, it does remind all of us that SLPs are responsible for every aspect of patient care or student care. And really, you should have that sort of philosophy in that thought process that support personnel must always be under supervision by an SLP, but that you will use different methods of supervision, as deemed appropriate, for safe and effective patient care. So one method of supervision, of course, is direct observation. And we are asking you to supervise using direct observation on a regular basis. However, not necessarily with every patient, student. And again, that is a change in this position statement. But it has been in existence now a good two to three years.
Yeah.
Okay, a lot of it will depend on the competencies of the CDAs. There are some extremely competent CDAs. And if they're seeing a very typical caseload, then the direct observation must take place, but it needn't be as frequent. And we do get questions, don't we, Sarah? Well, what is the percentage? Should I do it 20% of the time or something? We're saying really this is.
That was removed, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
That has changed, yeah.
And this is the essence of self-regulation. It is up to you. Sometimes CDAs will need more, even maybe more than 20% direct observation. Other times, it's going to be much less, it's up to you. Okay, and we have the position statement and a link there. And we did do an eforum in 2017. And you can access the slides and the recording either on the website or we have linked them here for you. So Sarah.
Yes.
Changing completely again.
Yes, on to a new topic. This time it's about auditing. And this is a good example, it was a personal, sorry, a practice advice question that triggered this one, that we thought we would include for everybody as well.
Yeah.
So what happens with auditing of personal health information by non-health information custodians? So in this instance, your manager potentially might not be a regulated health professional. Could be psychologist, could be a teacher. So in our example here, we have a teacher who is a member of the College of Teachers. Now, she's your manager, she's going to do a chart audit as part of the performance appraisal. So the SLP is asking the question, do I have to get parent consent for her to review my records?
And just a little clarification, a psychologist is a regulated health professional.
Thank you. See, this is why we're both here. So that would be a different situation, wouldn't it? The teacher is not a regulated health professional.
Absolutely.
So the psychologist would be a different story. So let's stay with the teacher scenario. So in this case, with the teacher as the manager, do I have to get consent from my manager to audit my charts?
Or get consent from the parents for the manager to audit the charts?
Even though it says for my manager, I hear you, yeah.
Yes.
Do, a yes, yes. All right, so the answer's possible, hopefully we have not confused you. The answers here hopefully are clearer than how I presented this. Number one, no, your manager is regulated by the College of Teachers, so you don't require consent. Number two, no, P HIPAA allows for internal audits without requiring consent. Number three, yes, you are a health professional and your record is personal health information, so you need consent.
Okay, and so let's go to the poll, launching it now. And we are getting some responses, good.
And this time we've, it's a range, it's not one exclusively that we're seeing. So again, it's good to get clarification on this one.
Absolutely. So I'll just give you a few moments more. Terrific.
Good.
So let us close that and share the results with you. And the results are, minimal amount, no, the manager is regulated by the College of Teachers. 35% saying no, P HIPAA allows for internal audits. And 62% saying, yes, you have to get consent from the parents or substitute decision maker for the manager to audit the charts.
So this is interesting, yes.
And back.
We are going to look at the answer for this one, which actually is no. So P HIPAA does allow for internal audits without requiring consent.
Absolutely.
So this is probably new information for a number of people.
Yeah.
So let's take a look at the act and this section of the act, which is auditing and accreditation. So what it is saying is that you as a HIC, you as the SLP, you may disclose personal health information about an individual, so about your students, without the student or their parents, the SDM's consent to a person conducting an audit or reviewing an application for accreditation or reviewing an accreditation. So it does have provisos here, so the audit must relate to services provided by you.
Yeah.
So it's got to be within that.
Yes.
Also, the person does not remove any of those records from the custodian's premises. So the place where you are securely keeping those records, that's where they would conduct the audit.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. We also have added another resource as well. This is in the practice advice section, under consent and capacity, actually. So you did say there might be some other resources here. So disclosing information without consent, it talks about audits as well as other possibilities. But right now, we're focusing on the audit section. So you're going to look for it under security and privacy.
Yeah.
Not consent. So actually, but this does make sense. So this is actually much more to do with personal health information. So it's going to be keeping records secure and private. And it gives you some examples of some of the other articles, but the ones we're, the one we're referring to is this disclosing information without consent.
Excellent. So we are on to our last. So we are on to our last topic, Sarah. And that is, and again, another topic where we're getting a lot of phone calls from the registrants. And again, a lot of phone calls from people in the school board about cloud storage of health information. So what should school board SLPs being, what should they be considering in this situation? So what is important? And I think again, it's going to be working on collaboration with different staff, different roles within the school board because you do have to ensure privacy and confidentiality. So maybe your school board has a policy on protecting personal health information. Now, we would suggest maybe your school board just has a policy on confidentiality of the student record. We would really recommend that you consider an actual policy on personal health information, you know, which is, can be different from just a, a student information. And with regard to the collaboration, some school boards, admittedly, I think they're the larger school boards, will have a privacy officer or privacy staff. And so engage with them and also with your IT staff.
Information technology.
Information technology, absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, tell them that you are going to require remote access across schools, across a board's district, and that you really have to focus on privacy. It has to be a robust confidential system, a secure system. However, another important thing to bear in mind is that you have to keep that record accessible because the patient, the student, or the substitute decision maker, most likely the parent, does have the right of access. So whatever cloud system you're using, make sure that the record remains accessible. So if you are looking to develop a cloud storage system, unfortunately, we, it, it's not really our role to recommend one system over another. We don't have that expertise, we were not current. So do consult either legal or other relevant expertise when taking on significant initiatives.
Alex, I'm just thinking we would add into this the retention as well, how long.
Yes, good point.
How long records need to be kept.
Yes.
From the college's perspective as well.
Yes.
So that would be another factor.
Another factor.
The cloud storage.
Absolutely, absolutely. And although we bring it in here, and I know Sarah talked about it right at the beginning of the presentation, really, all of us as health information custodians, as regulated health professionals, we must not collect, use or disclose more personal health information than is reasonably necessary to carry out a screening, assessment, intervention, our plan of care. So we should always be cognizant of that. You need to collect, use, disclose as much information as required, but not more than that. And I think this is very important when we're considering cloud storage and the inherent risks that could occur. So talking of risks, it's very important to have an incident management plan. And that is to cover sort of four areas. One, what are you going to do if there's an interruption to the cloud storage? You've got to be able to access that patient record, you've got to be able to upload and document. Maybe a patient parent is asking for access. So if there's an interruption, what are you going to do? What are you going to do if there are privacy breaches? And we're going to talk about that on the next slide. But you really do need to have a plan of action. And then if you need to make corrections on the cloud storage, how are you going to do that? And overall, how are you going to mitigate risk of using cloud storage? So the Information and Privacy Commission, they know, and, and they have produced some good documents and resources. They know cloud storage of personal health information exists. So something that I know, Sarah, you use a lot and you brought to my attention, which was terrific, is an article called Thinking About Clouds. We also have another article that we actually wrote with Samida Joglakar, the audiology practice advisor. And we are going to put a link to it on the slide when we upload. But it was about breaches, what to do in a privacy breach. So that will be another good resource.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, I think that's, that's clear.
So we have just five minutes left, so I'm very pleased we got through everything. And I do want to draw your attention to our team. This myself, this Sarah, who you've met today in, in our presentation. There is also Samida Joglakar. Now she's the audiology advisor, but also her role as manager of mentorship. And I know a lot of mentorships occur in the school board. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask her. Any audiology, audiologists working in school boards also should contact her. And David Beatty. Just before I leave, Samida, she is bilingual, so can answer questions in French from audiology or mentorship. But we also have David on our team, who again is bilingual and can answer questions in French from our colleagues in the French school boards or in a school board where there is a French-speaking SLP. So I can see we have a number of questions. I'm just going to pull them out. And we've got about twenty or so. Some of them, I can tell you, are considering the OSR. So that will be, we'll definitely answer that in, in our articles. And otherwise, I think we are at three minutes to.
I did see a quick one there saying, can consent be verbal? And absolutely.
Yes.
It can be verbal, doesn't have to be written. Each school board seem to decide on a process, a system of how they are going to obtain consent.
And I think that's a very good question, just for the last two minutes. I think probably one of the best, best methods of obtaining consent is having some sort of form to ensure that all of those elements of informed consent are covered. You're explaining the surface, the service.
The risks, the alternatives, the consequences, the benefits.
Yes, et cetera.
Yeah.
But sometimes a good conversation on the phone really helps you to feel very comfortable that you have got a, a good consent and that the parents or another substitute decision maker really understands the, the nature of the consent. So absolutely, you can do it verbally. However, as Sarah said, you would then document it. Yes. And I think you're, you were saying earlier, as a peer assessor as well, document, document, document. You do need evidence that you did obtain consent.
Yeah.
Okay. So Sarah has an iPhone, so I'm going to ask her to put it on and see what time it is.
Twelve fifty-seven.
Twelve fifty-seven. So should we have another quick look at the questions? See if there's another really quick ones.
That was the concern one.
And how do I document verbal consent? You would document it in a sentence form that you obtained informed consent. You wouldn't necessarily have to document every element that we were talking about if you have a consent policy there. And, and so if you were ever peer assessed or questioned, you could say, yes, it was verbal consent and these are the areas I covered. Okay, and.
While Alex is looking at the questions, again, as she said, we're posting this under events and we will be addressing all these additional questions. Usually there's some nice patterns to them, so I'm assuming the frequently asked questions, if we're, you know, developing an article that helps address these questions. Again, we are available for any that maybe come up in the future that you haven't thought of today.
Excellent. So with that, we'll say thank you very much for joining us. My goodness, we, I, I think it was a very good exercise for us to gather all of this information, to check this information with the legislation. And so we're very pleased that, that we did it as well. And I hope you found that it helped you. So with that, we will say thank you and goodbye.
And enjoy your afternoon.
Yes.
And weekend.
And it's Friday.
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm going to do now is to turn off our system and so we'll say goodbye.
Goodbye today.